Okay, it's six o'clock on Monday, January eighth, twenty twenty four. We're the I'm calling to order the Town of Rutland Select Board meeting. We're meeting in the lower level of the Rutland Public Library here on Main Street. And if we can, oh, we're being on, we're on Zoom and we're being recorded for live airing on Local Access Television and re-airing on YouTube and other social media outlets and re-airing on Local Access as well. Can we start with the pledge, please?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag, United States of America, into the Republic which is theirs, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Um, sorry for our public, but if possible, if the board's amenable, I'd like to take our first executive session out of order. That would be for reason number one, to discuss the reputation, character, physical condition or mental health, rather than professional competence of an individual, or to discuss the discipline or dismissal of or complaints or charges brought against a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual for a complaint against brought against town employee fire chief. Do we have a, is the board amenable to taking that out of order?
We don't need a motion for that, right?
Yes, we do.
We don't need a motion? We'll deal with it.
We need a motion to enter into, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I'm amenable. I'll make a motion that we uh, uh, enter into our executive session out of order.
I will second the motion.
For reason number, uh, for reason number one.
And to return to open session.
And to return to open session.
And to return to open session.
Harry made the motion, Paul, you second that?
I do.
Okay, roll call, please, Harry.
Second, I.
Matt's an I.
Madra I.
Yalva Nai.
Whitman I. Thank you, we are back at six thirty six for open sessions. We will move right into our minutes, treasury warrant and payroll. I would take a motion to approve treasury warrant twenty four fourteen and payroll twenty four PW fourteen.
Make a motion to approve treasury warrant twenty four dash fourteen and payroll twenty four dash PW fourteen.
The motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any questions, comments, concerns? Austin, anything of? Nope?
Nope.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? Roll call, Harry.
Second, I.
Matt's an I.
Madra I.
Yalva Nai excluding safe list.
Whitman I. Um, we have a few sets of minutes, three, I will ask that we take them all individually. Approval of meeting minutes, we have uh, August third, twenty twenty three, meeting minutes to be amended. I would take a motion to amend the August third, twenty twenty three, meeting minutes as presented.
I make a motion to approve the amended August third, twenty twenty three, meeting minutes as presented.
The motion, is there a second?
Second. Go ahead.
It has to be Paul, I think, because Harry and um, Tom were.
She pointed at me this time.
So we have a motion and a second, any conversation? Um, and Harry and Tom, you guys were absent from this meeting, so um, let's do a roll call, Harry.
Second, I.
Matt's an I.
Madra I.
Yalva abstain?
Um, Harry, I think you need to abstain. You wanted them, that's okay. Um, and Whitman, Whitman I.
No worries.
And that it's available on YouTube. So I would take a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
A motion to approve December nine, twenty twenty three, meeting minutes as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, any questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none, roll call, Harry.
Second, I.
Matt's an I.
Madra I.
Yalva abstain?
Whitman I, I just want to thank everyone again, and Peter, you too, and Rebecca for and Austin for all the time you had on that meeting. I will then take a motion for approval of our December eleventh, twenty twenty three meetings. This was a regular scheduled meeting of between with the Select Board and working as the Board of Public Works. Everyone was present.
Make a motion to approve meeting minutes, December eleventh, two thousand twenty three.
The motion, is there a second?
Second.
The motion is second, any questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none, roll call, Harry.
Second, I.
Matt's an I.
Madra I.
Yalva Nai.
Whitman I. Just uh, moving into our member comments and announcements. Thank you all for those. I just want to wish everyone a happy holiday and a happy new year. We made it through, I think, um, in our first big, first snowstorm in quite a while. Was yesterday, and I think town did a phenomenal job getting cleaned up. I appreciate all the work that DPW and Public Safety did to kind of get us through. It was a lot more of a storm than I think we all expected and went on for a lot longer of a time. So, thank you for all of that. Also, I know there was a lot of stuff going on around the holidays, not just holiday fun, but work wise for staff. I was uptown a few, few days and the offices were hopping, so I really appreciate, even though it was holiday time, that, you know, the staff was going full tilt and really working hard. So I appreciate all of, all of that. I, the Events Committee has a few things coming up. They were supposed to have a Rutland Then and Now Photography Thing yesterday here in the library, but it was postponed for a date to be determined yet. So keep an eye on the website for that and social media. In February, they have a fiber arts showcase coming up. I believe that's um, if you would like to register for it, um, you can do so on the website under the Events Committee page. And there's a public auction in town tomorrow for a property in the Turkey Hill Pond area, so if you're interested in any of that, there's a public, uh, it's under News and Announcements, there's information for that. I think it's at noon tomorrow here at the library. The details are on the website for all of that. I think that that's all I have for tonight, does the, anyone on board have any? Anything else? All right, um, is there anyone here for public comment? Sharon, do you know who was here?
Yes, he uh, was mistaken, his meeting is tomorrow night.
Okay, thank you for finding out for him. I appreciate that.
We chatted.
Thank you. Hearing no one, I don't think there's anyone on Zoom for public comments. I would ask if the board would be amenable to taking item number, I'm sorry. A, under part five, new business, out of order. It's the amendment to the memorandum of agreement for the International Association of Firefighters Local forty eight seventy eight. Is the board amenable to doing, hearing that now?
Yes.
Sure. Okay. So, Austin, Seth, do you guys want to take this?
Uh, I've deferred the fire chief on this, but uh.
Uh, current language in the contract specifically says that in the absence of the fire chief for greater than one week, um, the senior captain takes over my absence during my absence for illness, extended vacation, whatever. Now that we will be having a new deputy chief starting on the twenty ninth, we wanted to amend the contract, that's got eighteen months left in the contract that the deputy, uh, so the captain would step up in the absence of myself and the deputy. So if both command staff were gone, then the senior officer would take over in that case. So it's just a, a minor language amendment that will be memorialized in the next contract in eighteen months.
So you are asking us for a motion to approve that?
Correct, and it was drafted by Town Council.
Yep, that MOA, amendment to the MOA.
And there is a signed, the union signed contract you have, so.
Thank you.
Through the chair.
Yeah, I was gonna say, anybody questions, yeah.
So we have basically two contracts in place right now?
Oh, you have one contract, and this would be a side letter that amends one article in that contract. So they just go together.
Does that take effect now?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, and then that one piece of paper will be memorialized into the Holy Body at the next contract, we know.
Okay.
Yep.
All right.
Any other questions, comments, any clarification, anything? Thank you, Seth, for going through that. Um, so I would take a motion to uh, sign the amendment to the um, MOA for the I A F F Local forty eight seventy eight. As presented.
Make a motion to sign the amendment for firefighters' MOA, uh, as presented.
Second, a motion.
The motion and a second, any other conversation? Hearing none, roll call, Harry.
Second, I.
Matt's an I.
Madra I.
Yalva Nai.
Whitman I.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I am okay to move back now to the town administrator update, Austin?
Thank you very much, Happy New Year. I have dispensed with the PowerPoint. I think it's great, and I enjoy putting various graphics on the town seal, but um, I'm trying to build up my writing, it's one of my resolutions, so um, I switched to a, a written report. Just one thing before I start this report, all of the previous uh, administrative reports, the PowerPoint slides, and then my first written slide, uh, written document from the twenty fourth is posted on the town administrator's page. All archived reports are available on there as well. This report is posted online. So just to, to roll through quickly related to personnel, happy to say the police chief has recruited a new full-time patrol officer, Paul Suzian. He joins us with several years of law enforcement experience and education. Currently working for the Town of Warren Police Department, he'll be starting within the next couple of weeks. Public Works Director has promoted Michael Neath to Chief Water Operator. You recall, this has been a position that has been vacant for several months now. Michael is an existing employee of the Water Division, and just recently, a couple of weeks ago, received his full T three license from Mass D E P, which qualifies him for this position. He'll be working with the foreman, Carl Christensen, to um, you know, kind of formalize that dynamic of being now the chief, working on mostly the treatment side. And Carl will kind of take the lead on the distribution side until, until Michael kind of gets up to speed totally on the overall operation. Most important thing right now is treatment. We've, because we have not had a chief operator for several months, we've been relying on Weston Sampson for licensure for the plant. This is an important designation, not only just to have as an employee, but in the state's eyes, to make sure that we have a town licensed employee operating that plant. And will now be recruiting a new water operator to fill Michael's place. And the Board of Health, by law, is required to appoint an animal inspector. They've appointed Randy Jordan, I believe this is an annual appointment. This is one of those positions I candidly didn't know about. But apparently, through general law, you were required to have an animal inspector, which is different than the animal control officer. There's several things that are, that are duties that are in the general law for this position, but mostly it's kind of barn inspections, if there's any quarantine of wildlife. The animal inspector technically has the responsibility, but because we have an animal control officer, they work very closely together. Any questions on personnel?
Yeah, I have a question, how many applicants for the animal inspector?
One. Actually, none, I think they, they recruited who they appointed. Position. The challenging thing with this is it's not really a position. It's a stipend of, I think, five hundred dollars, which because the responsibilities are shared with the animal control officer, it's actually half of that. So it's not a very advantageous position. You know, there's, I think communities, especially out West that, they have, it's either merged into the animal control officer, it's a super regional animal inspector who, you know, they cover a large region.
So my question, in what you just said, is if it's required by mass law, how did they merge it into, or they just made it part of?
They designate the responsibilities. So for example, let's say we were to give Tamika the responsibilities, the Board of Health, because this is a Board of Health appointment, the Board of Health, among all, everything else that she does, could appoint her to fulfill those responsibilities.
Through the chair, uh, just one question, who would inspect his animals?
So, uh, good question. So in this, in this dynamic, they would work with a nearby community, I believe they have an agreement with the Town of Holden to fulfill that responsibility, as obviously that would be a conflict.
Sorry, I have one too, it's a hot topic. If it's mass general law.
Yep.
What's, uh, are, are there already Massachusetts policy, whatever, in place for enforcement, or like, what are?
How is he tracking?
Yeah, how, if somebody doesn't pass an inspection, how is that tracked, how is it enforced, are there filing?
So I believe, so if there is not a pass, so I think they have to document every inspection. If there, for example, if there was something that didn't pass, those responsibilities are housed in the Board of Health's domain, so.
For this town?
For the, for, well, for virtually, not, not this town, virtually every town.
Okay, so he.
This is a Board of Health appointment, so he reports to the Board of Health.
But is it something that, it's, is it just for the Board of Health in Rutland, or is it Massachusetts? Does it, is it Rutland?
Yep. Yep.
But I think, I think mass general law says that it's the local municipal Board of Health that is required, is the responsibility holder of that position.
Yep.
Does that make sense?
Okay, so anything, any issues or anything would go through the Board of Health?
Yeah. Her, you know, MGL says that it's, that that's how the flow works.
Yeah.
But it's on, it's not like the statewide Board of Health, it's not like DPH, it's Rutland, yeah.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Through the chair. This seems like a very specific position. Does the state law mandate any education, or what the requirements you have to have to be an animal inspector?
Yeah, so I, uh, so I, I, and I don't know the exact certification. I believe there is something related to the quarantine side of the responsibilities, which is why I think for several years now, the animal control officer has fulfilled those, because by the nature of their work, they have those, that training and those certifications necessary.
If I can add, I just pulled it up um, on the MG, on the mass.gov website. And the qualifications, it says there aren't, there are no scholastic professional, i.e. veterinarian, or horse, or farm, sorry, farm experience requirements for the position of animal inspector. A generalized knowledge of domestic animals will prove very useful. And it really talks about a kind of reasonably experienced in the care and handling of domestic livestock animals, be generally experienced in their hus- husbandry, and knowledgeable in the handling and care of other domestic animals such as dogs and cats, knowledge and experience with common urban wildlife, such as raccoons, skunks and bats that expose domestic animals and come under the jurisdiction of the mass division of fisheries and wildlife will prove beneficial in the collection of specimens for submission to the state radio laboratory. They should familiarize themselves with domestic animal import requirements, they should also understand local ordinances, sanitary codes, zoning laws, et cetera, which may form part of their duties to their primary nominating bottle, body at the municipal level. So, yeah. And then list out their duties on MGL.
So the site, it was posted and nobody applied?
I don't know if it was posted.
We have about six farms in here, in that area, so.
I don't know.
Did we reach out to the farmers to see if any one of them would have wanted to?
Yeah, so because, because this doesn't involve candidate any of the rest of the town at all, strictly a Board of Health, I believe they've had, through the um, health inspector or the health agent, I believe they had conversations essentially, probably begging people to say, hey, will you take this stipend of two hundred and fifty dollars to do this? And ultimately, they found someone who was willing to perform it. Ultimately, and this actually raised a, a good conversation when we were working through this, is, you know, maybe long term it is a, a good idea to merge this into our animal control responsibilities. Uh, and something that we have discussed for next year, to plan for.
That's it, thank you, Chair.
Yeah. Thanks, Austin.
As noted in my email to the board earlier, the Philly Driscoll Administration has finally announced what they're calling nine C cuts, which are state budget cuts. If you've read some of the news, and as we've talked about over the past several weeks, the state now has had six months of revenues not meeting their targets. And at this time, the, the administration today has announced three hundred and seventy five million dollars in cuts to the state budget. I was notified last night by Rep Ferguson that the only cut included in, uh, that affects the Town of Rutland is the earmark associated with the upgrades to equipment for the Rutland Regional Dispatch Center, which has been reduced by approximately eleven thousand five hundred dollars. This was a project that would allow for radios to be utilized through cell signal in school facilities. One of the challenges we have is, once we enter the school building, our radios do not work. So this would connect to wifi and cell coverage to be able to operate the radios. We still think this is a good project, so we're working on some alternative funding solutions to fill that gap, as the earmark will still cover approximately fifty percent of that. And I sent, and included in my report is the list of the full three hundred and seventy five million. They're not line by line, but certainly they're summarized with the various programs. None affects directly local aid or education aid, from what we can see. And we don't believe there's any other earmarks or projects that have been cut by this nine C cut. Any questions on that?
Thanks for providing it.
Yeah, as a board member, hope we can find it eleven five to complete that project.
Because I believe too, that the um, earmark that's required to get the schools up to a par with the communication center is definite necessity.
And security.
Yep.
Cameras.
Absolutely. You know, not an ideal time to cut product, you know, cut funding for town earmark projects. If you, you know, we could have already had this money spent. So, you know, it's good that we are under contract, but haven't completed the project yet. I don't know what would have happened if we've already spent the money, if we would have had to return it or things like that, so. Luckily, it's also not a major, you know, half a million dollars or things like, you know, something like that. It's relatively small earmark that we believe we can find somewhere else in the country, or an alternative funding source, so. Related to projects, I notified the board in, in previous email that we have several culvert flooding issues in the community. One of the major ones was located on Miles Road. We've identified that it's a existing stone culvert located under the rail trail, just after the entrance off of Miles Road on the rail trail. We've made outreach to the property owner, which is Department of Conservation Recreation slash Fish and Wildlife. We've reached out to Senator Durant and Rep Ferguson for support. We were able to work actually with the rail trail. As they have an agreement, long-term agreement with DCR, they first agreed to repair the issue to allow for the water to continue to flow. Upon starting that repair, they realized that it's an old stone culvert. And there's some pictures on, on page one that show what that looks like. The second photo with the cones, those are the rocks that were removed from inside of the culvert that was blocking the water. So upon opening up this culvert, the uh, folks that have been involved realized that the more permanent replacement is necessary. So they'll be replacing the culvert with a five-foot pipe. I believe the pipe was scheduled to be delivered today, and the work will be completed sometime this week, which is hopefully before the rain comes. So we're asking, so just first and foremost, I want to thank obviously everyone that's been involved, and obviously the Greenways for taking the leadership on getting this repaired. Certainly not a, a permanent replacement, there needs to be probably a total culvert, box culvert replacement. But for now, we believe that this is a good solution to get the water flowing, so it doesn't, you know, continue with the flooding issues. So later on in this meeting, we'll be asking for the board to allow the chair and myself to sign an easement from DCR as a formality. Because the town is supporting the work and continuing to support the work, we've loaned a dump truck to allow for the material to be disposed of. We need an easement sign between the town and DCR to complete this work. I think it's more of a formality, because DCR essentially already gave the go-ahead, but to make sure everything's checked off, we'll be asking later on this meeting for that to be, to be, sure.
Through the chair. We're only replacing at this point five feet under the road, you said?
No, it's more than five feet, it's the diameter that's five feet.
So, but we're not replacing the whole thing at this point?
We are.
Oh.
Yeah.
I guess I missed, you said at some point we need to.
No, so it, so at some point we need to, so right now, if you were to drive down there right now, or look at this photo, this is where the PowerPoint would help. The top photo shows, at the very bottom, that was the, essentially the area where the culvert, this stone, existing stone culvert was. Ultimately, a long-term permanent replacement would be what they're calling a box culvert. It's a, you know, kind of a concrete structure that they would just open up, place in there, and that's a very probably, not, if not permanent, close to permanent replacement for culvert. For now, they will be just putting, at the very bottom there, they'll be putting that five-foot diameter pipe from where the water begins on one side to the other side to Thayer Pond, for now.
Do you know, I know there's also beaver activity down there, so are there plans to kind of provide on the ends of the culvert? You know how they usually do like the metal?
Screens.
Yeah.
I don't know the answer to that. I think that would be a sensible addition to that as well. We did do that on Miles Road section, they installed the, the screen, which I think has been helpful.
I know with the box culverts, it's easier to do, and it's, they're, they seem to be less beaver inviting, but for that, I know that as soon as they see them, they're there, so if you can just try to get it on the radar, I mean, I'm sure DCR and Fish and Wildlife know, but just kind of.
Yep.
That we have a lot of beavers down there.
Yeah. Yeah, we have beavers everywhere, it's ridiculous. And it's been a huge issue.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
If we move forward and put, and drop in a box culvert, does that mean we have to rip up the whole road, or they're going to put it in through the side?
Yeah, no, so it wouldn't be the road, it'd be the rail trail. That's the problem, the, the water actually flows fairly well under the, under Miles Road, but it gets stuck, there's a small, I don't want to call it a retention pond, but a small.
Kind of has been created as a retention pond now because of the flow.
And it gets stuck there, because in this picture, it gets stuck essentially right here. If you were to look at this, I think I have pictures from.
Oh, so we're looking at the side that gets stuck through, I thought we were looking at the outtake side.
So it gets stuck there, floods Miles Road, and it's not allowed to flow through to Thayer Pond. This will allow it to, to go through, yeah. Because especially, once we opened this up and, and you saw water flowing, there were two areas of miles that were flooding. Both were significantly lower, even with some of the water that, that came. There was no issue, so this will hopefully be a, a, you know, a good solution for now.
Is that a project that, just for my own, that I have to go through CIPC?
No, because it's not, the town is not doing the work.
Okay.
And, and the only reason why we've been supporting is, is the Greenways. We do routine supportive, as our annual contribution, we do routine assistance with some of the maintenance of the rail trail. So we believe that this was, because they're helping us out significantly with the flooding issue, we lent it a guy and a dump truck for the duration of this project.
Kind of some of the in-kind support.
Yep. A section that I am including now in these reports are just upcoming discussion points. You recall from the last meeting, we had a couple of items. Just, and we'll talk about this, this is also an agenda item, but at the request of the chair, we're asking the board to start thinking about the process for appointing members to a permanent bylaw committee. The board probably recalls that there was actually a, a bylaw that was passed in two thousand nineteen, which pretty much looks like a, a good process and a charge for what a bylaw committee should look like, so expect this, if not tonight, to start at a future board meeting to, you know, consider the call for members who are interested in engaging. That charge has also been included in my report as well. And then just finally, I wanted to also recognize the Public Works employees. Almost, if not more than roughly twenty inches of snowfall within a fairly short timeframe, certainly more than I think than was forecasted. I think they did a good job clearing the roads and sidewalks in a timely manner. Certainly, continue cleaning up over the next couple of days. But also, just want to also. But also just want to also recognize that during the storm, the fire department also is busy as there was a fire on Main Street. So just want to thank them for all their work, especially during some challenging conditions as well. Happy to answer any further questions you have.
Yeah, just let me hit through the chair. You, you are looking for information for board to solicit guidance on one information you will need to make decisions. You've talked to the chair. Has the chair thought of when we would put that on the agenda?
It's on the agenda for tonight.
It is?
Yep.
For that one?
Yep. And so my hope was tonight, we would do it as kind of a first read and then set it officially, hopefully at our next meeting. To the actual call, finalizing call. But because it was done via a bylaw from two thousand nineteen, Austin dug that out. Thank you, Austin. And we think that that kind of provides the best roadmap. So how much do we really need to draft an actual charge when this spells it all out? And it speaks, it speaks to membership and everything. So it's not that the board has to reinvent that wheel.
Cause that's the process that we're, as part of the bylaw that we're going through tonight.
So the bylaw exists currently. This is a current bylaw right now.
Yeah.
And so I had asked to have on the agenda the discussion of draft, of in a draft charge for a bylaw committee. And that's pretty much what this is. It speaks to the purpose, what the membership is, the duties and responsibilities, and everything. So instead of creating a charge and we figured we would look at the bylaw. But that's as an item, as an item.
Okay.
Under our new business. Because my hope is to get that set or have the people call for interested individuals open throughout the public information sessions that I believe the ad hoc bylaw committee is holding the end of this month and the beginning of February, and then going into the special town meeting. The ad hoc bylaw committee, I think this board will need to discuss also with them. But I think that the thought was that they would stay on until the attorney general approves. The, they would stay seated until the attorney general approves, rather than exactly at that town meeting. If every, assuming everything passes that they're done, that they would stay on until we get approval from the attorney general. And that ideally in that gap, the new bylaw committee would be, the permanent bylaw committee would be seated and they could have a couple meetings, joint meetings to kind of transition, see where things are. I think we had made some notes about kind of some things that we thought definitely were worth being reviewed by a full-time or a permanent bylaw committee, but.
Okay, I was, I was thinking that the process of appointing and the bylaw were two different things. That's why I asked you if we were gonna discuss the process of appointing members.
Yeah.
Not the bylaw itself, so.
The bylaw speaks to how to do appointments, so I think when we get there, we can talk about it.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you for the reports, Austin, and thank you for doing, sending the report out. I think you sent it out on Christmas morning or Christmas Eve night.
Oh, yeah.
So, thank you for that. I just wanted to highlight a couple of big things. If you went to the playground at Naqog, I know that that's been a very, a lot of moving pieces. So I don't know if you want to speak to that.
Sure. Yeah, absolutely. So the, well, first and foremost, I want to thank Safe Place Director Sarah Galvin for her work on this project. And she's worked closely also with the school PTO and also has received a grant, I believe, from, I think it's DESI. So this project, I think has been a couple of years in the making. After going through the procurement process, Childscapes was awarded a bid for the replacement of the playground and is also by Naqog Elementary School. There's some ADA components to this project as well to make sure that this playground is safe and usable for all. The vendor has ordered the materials that we delivered. I think they maybe have been delivered already, if not soon. And the construction and installation is expected to take place sometime in the spring. So that's some good news there. Any questions on that project? No general funds are coming to this project. This is entirely grant-funded and also fundraising from the PTO. Also, I don't believe the census has been sent out yet or if you've received your census yet. Just an FYI to folks. The Board of Health for many years has been working on possibly a municipal trash program. There's a variety of programs that you can go, you can go to the preferred vendor, you can have a town-sponsored program. And for a variety of reasons, there's been little progress. The town of Hubbardston and Princeton had reached out to me and I had communicated with the Board of Health in conducting a survey to see if there's an opportunity for a regional partnership for a municipal trash program. After talking with also with some vendors, this would likely be, if it comes to fruition and kind of all the data looks right, this would be a town program, which is an opt-out program to offer municipal trash and recycling at a much lower rate than what folks are paying right now with their individual contracts and companies, with companies. So there's no obligation as of now, other than committing to sending out a survey. The survey consists of several questions asking, one, would you be interested? Do you do recycling? How much trash do you get rid of? That will be compiled between the town of Hubbardston and Princeton and inform a potential future grant opportunity for the three towns to apply for, to kind of start this program. It's just the beginning of a, of a process, kind of an exploratory phase, but something that's been kind of responsive to what the Board of Health has been looking to as well.
And I, well, I was just, if I.
Sure, yep.
Go ahead.
I think also there's been conversation in town, especially as it's become more populated with the dirt roads specifically and the gravel roads and the amount of traffic. And if there is a way to reduce the amount of truck traffic on a lot of these roads, rather than having four different trash haulers throughout the same road over the course of the week. If there could be a coordinated one, it could potentially help reduce. It's not a be all end all, cause there's a lot of other repetitive traffic, but that's one avenue.
I mean, in town now, we have five authorized haulers. So, you know, if everyone's in the program, we have one hauler that is a, you know, possibly a significant reduction in the use of those very smelly, large, ugly, no offense, vehicles going throughout town and a little bit more of an efficient operation as well.
Would this, as a preliminary question.
Sure.
Would this be something like cable where the town would authorize a certain organization? And then it would be where we would be able to pay our own cable rates if we signed on with them? So if we sign on, but we wouldn't be able to, or would we be able to sign on with another one if we wanted to?
Yeah, so it would be an opt-out program. So, so and there's, there's lots of things that we'd have to go through in this process. Approvals, getting to town meeting, establishing, you know, bylaws, enterprise funds, things like that. But in our research, looking at what some other communities that have done a similar program, the best rates come when the hauler knows that everyone in town is signed up.
Right.
And then it's an opportunity for, you know, if you, if your brother owns a trash company and you pay nothing, you're probably gonna opt out. So if you have a better rate than what the town offers, you would likely opt out. But for the most part, looking, because these haulers also, you know, if we have one hauler, and I won't name them, they have most of the town. But if they have an opportunity to add several other households in Hubbardston and Princeton, they may have an opportunity to offer a little bit more of an, you know, cheaper rate for folks. We're also looking at ways to make trash pickup and recycling pickup a little bit more uniformed. There's some folks that have a weekly, some folks that have a bi-weekly, some don't have recycling at all. So this is also a statewide goal of kind of waste reduction. And that's, we actually, this process has been spearheaded as well by Mass DEP. They're really interested in getting municipal trash programs, especially something regional. We wouldn't be the first, but certainly I think in this region, we would likely be one of the first in this region to do it.
Through you and through the chair, do you anticipate, looking at all the rates in town and then making sure that the lowest rate that people in town pay is a minimum starting point? Like if I'm gonna get the same rate for the assault I have, it better be a better rate than that.
Yeah.
If we're going townwide.
Yeah, ultimately, I mean, it's gonna be, you know, so this is, not only is it, you know, we're considering as a part of this, this is a, you know, possibly a three-town partnership. It's gotta be a good, it's gotta be a good opportunity for all three towns as well, right? But yeah, certainly, I think, and one of the questions is, how much are you paying? And collecting all that data and allowing for the towns, so we know. So if Austin's recycling company comes in and it's doubled than what we know people are already paying, then we don't have to continue with the process and we can, we can look somewhere else. But we believe that kind of there's strength in numbers. And we are very similar in our agreements. Two of the communities have a long-term disposal agreement with Wilburator and Millbury. Princeton and Rutland both have that. And, you know, the proximity. So looking at a variety of things, we think that this is possibly a good opportunity for the residents, so. But yeah, certainly rates, can they respond timely? What's their customer service? This would be a full RFP process that all three communities and various stakeholders in each community would be involved in. But the first step is, let's do a survey, collect some data.
And while this is really driven by the Board of Health, because Board of Health is the one responsible for trash, it fits in with kind of our goal of regionalization and looking at ways to provide services to the community at a value. And whether that's, you know, I would also look at it as if my rate's gonna stay the same or maybe go down by a couple dollars, but not necessarily significant. But the trash is gonna get picked up consistently or it's gonna be fewer times on the road or whatever. As it is, I think I see the trash truck up and down my house all the time.
I mean, I have my trash picked up. I'll tell you, I pay fifty bucks a month for it. And not only that, but this guy, if I need furniture removed, he'll do it for me. So it's not just the trash pickup.
Yep.
It's what else services will this, this company offer us at a fair rate.
Yeah, yep. I think that that's a consideration for sure.
One of the things, so, and just to, I had an opportunity to take a tour of What Chusset Earth Day, which is the organization that we're a member of, the Recycling Center in West Boylston. One of the things that we've been considering as well is, do we require the hauler to essentially do what you're suggesting, Harry? To take the television that you've left, left next to your trash bin and utilize What Chusset Earth Day services? The town is paying an assessment, we're a member, our residents are members. So it would be advantageous to also support that organization too, so.
Can I go off topic a second on that, Chair?
Yeah.
When I take my stuff to the recycling center, am I getting a discount? Because we're paying a fee in there? Or is it just a standard fee that every town pays just because we're a member?
So.
That I don't know.
Only member towns are allowed to take their items there. And it's generally, it generally, to my knowledge, is a reduced fee than if you were to have your trash provider, try to coordinate a trash provider pickup for, let's say, a sofa or something. So you have to get your item there. There is mostly a disposal fee, but it's generally less than what it would be if you were to just leave it out and hope somebody takes it or pay your trash company to take it or whatever. And only member, only residents of the member towns are able to utilize that facility, both for disposal as well as reuse, because they have a very large reuse.
Well, the reason I ask that is, they don't take mattresses. So I'd use my own hauler to take my mattress away. So that's one item they don't take. So if we're hiring a new hauler and there's limitations of what they can take and What Chusset doesn't take it, well then what do I do with it? So there has to be something in there that says, yes, you guys will take this or Earth Day will take it or whatever.
This, in all three towns, we also have an issue of illegal dumping. I'm not promoting it, but if, there's a lot of people, you look at the dumpsters behind the DPW are full with a lot of stuff that probably isn't DPW. We routinely pick up things that are just left on the side of road, whether it's intentionally or not. And we have nowhere else to bring them but our dumpster. And then we're paying a fee to our trash company to empty that dumpster. So this would also hopefully, ideally, as we're giving folks options to get rid of their couches or mattresses or anything else, there's an avenue for them to do that rather than illegally leaving it somewhere.
Right. Do we monitor those dumpsters?
No comment.
Or lock them?
They're not locked. It's an open dumpster.
No, but when I say monitor, I mean.
Please don't illegal dump.
We have a twenty-four camera, twenty-four hour camera on those.
Sure.
Okay.
I just want to also state that the Recycling, What Chusset Earth Day does accept mattresses for a fee, ten dollars for a crib, up to thirty dollars for a king box spring.
Interesting. When we called them, they say they didn't.
So it could have been a recent addition, because I know Massachusetts recently enacted a mandatory textile recycling. So it's, I don't know when you had called, but it's possible, because I think that.
This was about a month ago.
Oh, I don't know. I know that they were updating their rates that were going to be, they were, had new rates effective twenty twenty-four, but I don't know.
Okay.
It would be nice if they could do that, because, I mean, it would be nice if, if we did this and they could take things over there, because I'll admit, I mean, I don't go there, because I live on the far side of town. And it's all the way across Rutland, all the way across Holden into West, I'm not, it's too much of a hassle to get there.
So you just throw it on the side of the road?
No, but I have our trash guy that comes in and picks up additional things, so if we need to. But it's just, it's, it's the time.
Trash is a pain.
It is. It's awful.
I think if the town grows, that's something I'd be looking for.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thanks, Austin. Sorry to catch you on that. Moving in then to our new and special business, we took item number one, or item number A already. In our packets, we have the resignation of a Conservation Commission member, Scott Langren. So we need to accept his resignation. And then I would recommend putting out a call to, yeah, to, to fill the open, the vacant spot.
Before we do that, can I ask a question? Just reading his resignation letter, it's not the, again, I don't have a lot of personal experience with Scott, but it's not the first time that I've heard of hostile environments with regards to town committees. Is there, now that we have Ali in place, was any of this, whatever happened here, brought to her? Like, is there any, I, I, we have such a hard time getting people to get into committees and elected boards. So for me to hear that there's hostile environments, that's not gonna invite, nobody's gonna want to do it. And I just, I'm curious as to, it's, it's happened enough that I question what is happening and what is.
I mean, I think if you watch any of the Conservation Commission meetings, they're quite illuminating. I think that that commission especially has some growth to do with a staff member as a conservation agent. That doesn't speak to this, though. I think that some of it is, is a little bit of growing pains, that as town has grown and is not just, this is how we've always done things, that now there's more, there's closer oversight from the state level, from additional town entities or whatever, that just kind of what has always happened is not, not able to happen anymore.
Possibly to promote a policy of leave your personal agendas at the door? You know, something like.
You know, something like that, I mean, you know, we have to, we have to look at these things from a, an objective point of view, and, and when something personal comes into this and something like this comes into play, it's not the first person that we've lost in, in circumstances like that.
And that's why I'm asking, now that we have HR, is there something that we can put in place to help with some of these concerns? Like you can anonymously report a concern that could be reviewed or somehow.
Some of this is challenging, because this is a, the Conservation Commission is a board-appointed commission. It's not, the conservation agent is staff, but Scott was a board-appointed volunteer. And so, it's, it's, I don't wanna say it's not valuable to hear the feedback. He's more than happy, I mean, he's more than able to provide feedback to the office, to whomever. This is what we got, and I think that there was some, some other pieces that aren't highlighted in the, in, in the letter. So I think if you watch the meetings over the past kind of three to six months, it's, there's a lot there.
But is there anything that we can do to help alleviate that situation? Or is it?
I think that we need to be better at recruiting people and being mindful of who we appoint to the boards. And if that means that the boards and commissions aren't fully seated, or that there's an avenue that, you know, they're not fully seated, they don't have a quorum, because we're not just gonna appoint a, a body. Yeah, but that's again, a growth piece for all of town. And a mind change, a, a mind shift.
Right.
Because the expectation has always been, I've been on this board forever, so I should be reappointed.
Right, I'm entitled, right.
Right, and it's not always conducive to members who don't have ties to certain parts of, of whatever, to, to come into an, to a position.
It's a growing town, like Paul said, it's a growing town, people are changing, the town is changing, and some people have a harder time with that than others, that's all.
Yeah.
And is there any, I know we've got a lot of the bylaws for the elected and appointed, maybe it is appointed boards for, if necessary, removing. Does that apply across a lot of our other committees that don't have bylaws, do we have?
I think there's language in the draft bylaws for appointed committees, there's general language about, and that was, I think, one of the gaps that was identified by the ad hoc committee is, if there is a situation where a, a member needs to be removed.
That was one of the pieces, but we can't take action on that until that's in place.
Yeah, there's no technical mechanism right now in the books for that.
And I think conservation is tied closely to MGL also. So that's one of the commissions that has a little bit more in MGL than some of the other boards or commissions. But it's one of the considerations for sure, I think, as we start looking at, one of the future agenda items is looking at boards and commissions' charges and membership and everything, and that's definitely one of the considerations.
So we're good with this, Ellen? I make a motion to accept the resignation of Scott Langren from the Conservation, Conservation Commission.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second motion.
Motion and a second, any other conversation? Hearing none, Harry, Roca.
Second.
That's a.
With regret. Yavinai.
White man eye. Thank you. And I think that that position, that opening has been posted already. So if anyone has any interest, I think there's currently one opening on the position, on that, and that would just be filled until the end of this fiscal year. So until the end of June twenty twenty-four, and then it could be open for reappointment, so for the public. Thank you. Moving into our next item, we have twenty twenty-three license renewals. There's actually a third one here, we have Family Farms and Tula's House of Pizza. And I think today, Tamika, you said you just got in, actually, end of last week, but with sicknesses. It was Mal's Auto, correct? Yeah, so these were, I think, if you remember, we had a few stragglers that we had asked. Tamika had done a lot of outreach, and I had asked that if we received them by this meeting, that we would, if the board would consider approving them. And everything is in, all the fees and license requirements are in, is that correct, Tamika?
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah.
Is there, if they hadn't gotten there, you ever work in, what's the?
So I would say after this meeting, if they hadn't gotten it in, they would have to start as if it was a new license. So they would have to go through the public hearing process with the better notifications, similar to as if it was, they were coming in brand new.
Okay, and is that, is there typically, like, is it by end of year? Are we, is this like an extra consideration for these?
So, I think.
You did this last year as well, some of, last year, the board actually wasn't able to renew any of the licenses before the end of December. So when I looked back, all of them were renewed on January nine of last year. So I believe it's, it's just been year to year at the discretion of the particular board, whether or not they wanted to extend that courtesy of one extra meeting into the new year.
And I think this year Tamika was really on the ball trying to get everything in by the end of December. Also, we had, we didn't have that last meeting in December, because it was the week of the holidays. So I felt that providing this opportunity kind of as this meeting was fair. Ideally, you know, hopefully we can improve communication, but I also don't want to be against any businesses for whatever reason.
Yeah, and I will say out of all the businesses, these were the last three stragglers. And so this will now, everybody will now be completely up to date.
And everything expires by December, by next, the end of next year, or the end of this year, so it's, yeah. So it's not like they bought themselves any extra time, but after still, everybody's on the calendar year. Yep, good question.
Oh, sorry.
No, anybody else? So, don't forget Mal's also, sorry.
Yeah, Mel's, is it Mal's or Mel's? I'd like to make a motion to approve the two thousand twenty-three license renewals for Family Farms, Tula's House of Pizza, and Mal's Automotive, or Auto.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I just wanna make a comment that I think our treasure collector has asked, that there were two businesses this year that the property owner is, is delinquent in taxes and/or water sewer. And so, the property owner, the two businesses are renters. So she felt, and the office felt, that it wasn't fair to punish the business owners for property owner's negligence. But I would like to put a call out, our treasure collector is very, very amenable to working at our GPW as, as well, working with any business owner or resident to get on a payment plan, and as long as you're on a payment plan, you're considered in good standing with the treasure collector. And so it's again, a frustrating piece, because the, the back, the delinquent taxes are something that, you know, we all collectively as, as taxpayers end up covering. So I just wanna, it's again, the businesses are renters and they have everything that they need, but it's the property owners that are delinquent. So I think in the past, it's some, some years Becky's provided us a list of delinquent tax, all the delinquent tax owners. I don't think she's done that recently, but. I don't think it went to the board, though.
Oh, it didn't?
So I don't know if that's something that the board is interested in seeing, we would receive it, and it was not ever really for discussion, but it was more for information. But I do believe that, yeah.
Are the two that you mentioned here, are they significant, or are they?
I think so.
One of them is about ten thousand dollars delinquent.
How much?
Ten thousand dollars.
How long is that going on?
Two years.
So these are, the one has already been approved and one is i- in our approval tonight. And so again, the consensus from the treasure collector's office, kind of as well as the administrator's office and, and me, is that we shouldn't be penalizing the, the renters who are running the businesses, because they very well may not, they're paying their rent and they very well may not know that the property that they are renting is in arrears. But publicly, I just wanna point that out, that.
It's a tough spot.
I guess I have a hard time, if everybody in town is pretty much up on their taxes, granting somebody a two-year extension is a little much.
I think that it's not, I think there are a number of, of, the, the payment list is fairly extensive, so there are a number of properties that are on payment plans, and some of those are for very significant sums of money, at least historically. I haven't seen one recently. So it's a, an option that the town has taken historically with the treasure collector, to try to work with the property owners, rather than go through the foreclosure process, because that is long and expensive and doesn't always end up yielding benefits in a, a net positive benefit to the town.
I understand where you're coming from, but I guess, again, we sit here on a board that has to look out for the town. And if they wanna get on a payment plan, that's an option for them. But to be ten thousand dollars outstanding over two years with no payment plan, the town has to be cognizant, we have to be cognizant of that.
So what would you say, close those businesses who are renting and, and providing services and, and tax revenue to the town? And let the building sit empty and potentially then, I mean.
How much is the tax revenue?
I don't know, I don't know what the.
I don't know, I mean, the, the, that's not to say that the tax collector's office has not communicated that these folks are delinquent and has not reached out to try to offer them options. But unfortunately, you can't force them to respond.
Right, so if we've offered, if we've offered them one, two, three, four, five times, we've reached out, and they've done nothing, I think this board personally has an obligation to make sure that we collect the money. Through, through the chair, I agree with you, Harry, but it, do we happen to know if the landlords, are they Rutland residents?
Neither of them are.
Okay, so they're outside of town.
Correct, their businesses are registered in other towns.
So the, okay. And I'm not going for foreclosure, but you're, we've gotta find a way to make sure we col, if everybody else is that is on a payment plan, is willing to be on a payment plan, then we got an issue with these two that have to be resolved somehow. And I'm not saying foreclosure, but they do have to be resolved, we can't.
Well, I think that's the, legally, there's not a lot of options. It's, it has to get to a point that then the town can do a foreclosure. And so we can, it, this, one, one of them was already approved and the other one is up for approval tonight, could say, we're not approving that, and then that's a, a ding to the, the business owner who, again, has no control over it. It's just as if you were renting a home or a, an apartment and the building was foreclosed on, and then you as a resident or a tenant, who's been paying all of your bills and everything, are, are SOL.
I, I guess I, I think of that, I understand, but I think of that as an easy way out. If you're a business owner and you know you're gonna lose your business, you've gotta do something with the owner to make sure those taxes are paid. You, you personally owe something there.
But how do you know that you're, like, I don't know if my landlord has paid their taxes, like.
We can't disclose that to the renter to say, hey, you know, get on your landlord and tell him that they owe us these taxes, we can't disclose that information.
I think we all share this frustration, Harry.
Saying that the only option is foreclosure. If that, is that our only option besides working with them on a payment plan?
And there's, there's the whole tax title process, placing the lien of, of the amount that's owed, I mean, there's several steps. I mean, tax title is a several year process. The beautiful property, there's a for auction tomorrow, was a tax title property. And that took several years to complete, so, just, I mean.
And it's not inexpensive to the town, there's a cost associated with the town.
Also, we can recoup at the, you know, upon completing the auction, we can recoup those costs, but just putting it out there, just for, for the record, and we can cer, I can certainly send this list out, but there's, if you wanna include back taxes, interest, fees, there's approximately one point two million that is owed to the town at this point.
That's huge. And we're, and we're doing, we're doing nothing but letting it just sit there and collect?
No, 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 I'd, I'll give, I mean, the treasurer's office is aggressive, I mean, but of course, there's statutory, you know, things that we have to comply with. There's now also a Supreme Court decision that has come down that has further restricted our ability to, you know, collect some of these taxes as well. So there's a process that we follow, but unfortunately, especially if, if you owe twenty thousand dollars and you come and say, but I'll pay fifty dollars a month, you've technically said, I'll agree to a payment plan, which kind of inhibits some of that process as well. It's not as easy as, unfortunately, I think we all would like to be able to collect this money. But certainly, you know, there's, to give you reference, right now, we have ten, if not maybe fifteen parcels that are in land court now. We have five that are currently under a payment plan. And the remaining, I think, are in the process of going through the process that the treasure collector's office is allowed to follow.
Are these individual homes, or are they?
I'd have to look further, it doesn't classify that, but, you know, some look like they're individual homes, some look like they may be commercial or business property.
Okay, I mean, sitting on the board, how do we go to our citizens and say to them that we understand we're asking for money, we just raised a two and a half proposition, we got approximately a million and a half dollars that's owed to the town, we're willing to hurt you because we're asking for money for you, but we're not willing to do anything against the person that owes us the money. How do we go to the town and say that?
Peter, you have a comment?
Yes, Peter Crane, Nate's Way, the, there is a bylaw in town that allows the town to revoke the license of, any license for anyone who owes taxes, any taxes.
But the business doesn't owe the tax.
That would still shut down the, 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 the business, I understand that, I'm just saying, that is a much shorter process than tax title.
But it's also, the business isn't the one that owes the taxes, it's the property in which the business is leasing to run their business.
Yeah, that does happen. So the treasure collector's office, specifically Lisa, one of her responsibilities, when there is a permit that's filed, and it's happened, I think very recently it just happened, it triggers the treasure collector's office if you're applying for a building permit. She'll see Austin Segano, it's owes twenty thousand dollars. And that notification is then sent to the property owner to pay before it goes through the rest of the process. This, of course, is one of those circumstances where the applicant for this permit is not the property owner, hence why we're having this discussion now.
So is there anything the town can do that would notify the renter that they may be subject to losing their business or having to move their business? If taxes aren't paid, that doesn't violate the law in any way?
If we were to not renew the license, do we have to state why? Or we just say no?
And if we decide not to renew the license, is there a period where they have that they can renew it, that they're still be in good standing, twenty days, ten days, thirty days? So now the person who runs the business knows that this individual has been served or whatever, or can find that. I'm just, you know, I, I guess, I don't like being held hostage. And this is two years, this is definitely permanent, they want to not pay.
I can say, in the past, there was, the, a, a previous board did not renew a license because the property owner, and it was the business owner, that owed back taxes. I don't remember if it was taxes or water and sewer or something. And the business refused to shutter their doors, despite multiple notices on the doors. Notices on the doors, um, um, board of health as well as the health agent and everything, um. And again, it has to go through a process.
And I was just gonna add too that, um, the board, the licenses that the, um, board of health issues. Are separate than the licenses that we issue, so technically speaking, they're an elected board. They could still issue that food permit whether the board issues that common vic permit or not, um, there are some businesses that don't need a common vic permit. So they could still be getting their permitting through the board of health and not need to come to us at all, so there's a, there's a lot of, um, pieces. That connect in that, it that goes beyond just the select board.
Excuse me, one other thought is that a certificate of occupancy is a permit. Which means that the owner of the property could get served by having the certificate of occupancy revoked. Again, that's an extreme thing to do.
That's still not the business owner.
Right, yeah, there's every, everything we're talking about hurts the business and it's not their fault, it's.
Can we, through the chair, can we put, I think this is, if I heard you correctly, Eric, can we notify or approve the business license? With the stipulation that. What is it, every year, right? So with the stipulation that, uh, you know, I don't know what language you'd put in, but due to financial. Issues with the landlord, I don't know how to word it, but, you know, just to let you know, just to notify them, there could be an issue with your license before the year is up. Possibly legally. You know what I'm saying, give them a notice without, I don't know legally, if you can tell them the landlord's not paying the taxes, like you said.
Or what if we did it the other way, sorry, not to interrupt, what if we did it the other way and and notified the property owner and state. We're doing it now, but you need to bring your account up to good standing. Payment plan, whatever, because this will be considered again next round.
People when they're in trouble financially though, I, and again, that's why I asked you, I don't know if they're people or company, or I I don't know this. Who these, who this is, okay, if it's somebody that owns forty-five pieces of property and they got bit in deep pockets, then I I feel a lot. You know, let's be out of, but if it is just a family that owns a multi fam- you know. They they're already on the run, so to speak, and people when they're financially hurting, you know. I don't know if it's gonna do any good to send them another letter, that's my point, you know, I mean, you could serve it a hundred times, that doesn't mean, you know, they're scared or they're not paying or whatever reason, but.
I think it's, it's challenging, um, because these two particular businesses are repeat offenders year after year.
Okay.
So I don't know that necessarily sending a letter is going to change anything, um. You know, they say you can't get blood from a stone kinda thing, um.
So these landlords are repeat offenders, okay.
For these two particular businesses, I just, I don't want at all to come across like. We're discounting the efforts of the treasurer collector that somehow they've neglected to to try to collect these funds, because that's not the case, they just wanted to make sure. That the board was aware of the license that they were approving, that that these were the circumstances behind it and it wasn't just a clear, you know, cut situation.
So for these three, um, family farms, house, Tula's House Pizza and Mau's, we have. A motion and a second, I wanted to have that discussion, um, maybe I should have held it until after the vote, but I thought it was important to have the discussion again. With the conversation that it was. The the opinion of the treasurer collector as well as o- other staff and and myself personally also that, um, the. The business owner who is the less see shouldn't be penalized for, um, the delinquency of the property owner, but also state that we are. That we are aware of these issues, um, as is a treasurer collector.
Are any of these in arrears?
One of them is.
Okay.
And one from the prior approval. At at the, um, December letter.
This, this one and this one, right, with the same owner?
Which one are in arrears?
I don't know if I can say that.
I don't know if you can or not.
What's that?
If you can say who is in arrears, I'm not sure if you can.
Board member, if I'm gonna be voting on these, I'd like to know whether or not my vote is appropriate considering if they're in arrears. So how do I vote if I don't know they're in arrears?
Two of these properties, without saying them, are owned by the same person, correct?
No, only, um, only one of these properties is in arrears, the other one was.
Two were in the same plaza, correct?
Two are in the same.
Which is the same owner?
Correct.
Okay.
Um, but the other, the other one, um, that we spoke of was approved at the last meeting. So only one of these businesses is delinquent.
So, the family farms and tools is in the same building. So we're not looking at the renters, we're looking at the owner of that building who is in arrears. Correct?
The owner of the, the owner of the property.
The owner of that property.
Of the property.
Not necessarily that property though.
So, right, so we have a motion and a second, and I think that we are very close to kind of. Creating rumors that may, that that should not be.
Is this something that would qualify, could qualify executive session?
I don't think, no, I think it's, I mean, it was the opinion of the treasurer collector that the businesses should be. The licenses for the businesses should be approved because it wasn't the businesses that were in arrears, it was the property owners. Um, and so that's what we, that, the, it was one in our last batch. That that was the case and that it was one here. And I think that it's just, um, having the conversation that this is, that this happens. And that we're aware of it and that we need, that that we don't, I, what does, what's the board's take on it, do we say no to? Any, for next year, I think it has to be a next year question at this point, but next year, do we say if the property has. Delinquent, delinquency period, then any business that is on that property, whether it's linked to the property owner or not. Is not eligible for license, licensure or license renewal.
If I may, Leah, um, if the board goes in that direction, I might recommend that it's somehow documented with a vote. Or in writing, because by this time next year, it will be a different board and those board members may feel differently, you know, so just to have it documented. One way or the other, and then when I send out my annual renewal notices, if if that's the way you guys go, I can state that in the renewal notice. So that people will know, well, in advance to to check with their landlords if they happen to be.
So, if it's okay, I would like to take a vote on the renewals that we have the the motion and the second on for the three tonight. And then we can continue the discussion because I think that this was an unanticipated discussion, so we can ask to add it to the agenda and continue it. And then potentially, um, ask staff for some additional feedback and then we can look at for next meeting. Or we can make a decision, I I don't know, um, I think that that's, is the board amenable to that. So we have a motion and a second to approve, uh, family farms, Tula's House of Pizza and Mau's auto. License, twenty twenty-four license renewals. So we have that motion and second, um, on the applicant's side, everything is in and in good standing and everything.
Correct.
So, um, all the other permits that are needed are there, any fees that were required have been submitted. So we have a motion and a second, I'll take a roll call, Harry.
Sac Benye with prejudice.
Matt's in, yeah.
Matt's, uh, Ledger Eye.
Yeah, I'm an eye.
White Man Eye, um, I would take a motion to add the the continued discussion about the, uh, back taxes. Uh, in property owner versus rentor, renter, um, less see, uh, to the agenda.
So moved.
We have a motion and a, is there a second?
Second.
And a second, uh, roll call, Harry.
Sac Benye.
Matt's in, I.
Ledger Eye.
Yeah, I'm an eye.
White Man Eye, so to continue that discussion, um, I don't know how the board feels, um. Like I said, it came from the the staff's office that, uh, it's not the. Um, property, it's not the the business less see, but it's a property owner. Issue and so the business less see should not be held responsible for the delinquencies of the the property owner. Um, but I don't, I underst- I hear and I understand the frustration as to what is an avenue that we can try to better. Um, recoup or ha- have a better relationship with, um.
I think that's just it, like you said, Harry, it's almost like the town's being held hostage because the the property owner is reaping all the benefits of collecting the rent. But the town is not getting the property taxes and has to. Figure out where to get that from and, you know, how much was it, one point two?
Point two.
Million, which is what, almost half, if not more of our override that we just passed?
Just for clarification, that's for all of the back taxes in town, it's not for.
Understood, but I just, I mean, I understand, it's it's a very tough balance, you know, you you want to promote business in town, but. There's a fine line with letting a business continue on a property that is not. A s- a a repeat offender, that it's been years, that they're not even talking to the town about trying to come up to good standing. So, you know, he said, I I want the revenue more than anybody else, but we also don't wanna come in and have a reputation that states you don't have to pay your taxes, but you can still.
I think it also, I I I wanna play devil's advocate a little bit, it also can send. Uh, a tough signal to any potential business owners that are looking to lease land or lease a space, that they don't know what their property. Owner is doing and so they could very much be at the whim of their property owner and not, so again, it could. It could, and I'm not saying it would, but it could drive vacant vacant property because, and and no businesses, because business. Rutland attracts small businesses and small businesses talk, and if there's a talk that the select board is very strict about, you know. I have no control over what my property owner is doing, it might only avenue to have a business that I think would do well here is to rent. And there's very few property owners in town that have space that that would work. Then I'm really mu- really at the whim of of.
Well, and I'm, I'm not saying it has to be everybody, it's just case by case, if you're a repeat and you've not shown good faith efforts. You know, that's a different scenario than somebody that's made an effort.
This has been going on for years, so I imagine at one point, this outstanding debt was a half a million. Now it's one point two, at what point do we say to the town enough is enough when we get to two million dollars of outstanding debt?
But I, beca- be- I need to, I would need to reiterate, that one point five million outstanding is a lot of personal property, it's not a lot of the commercials.
Saying the whole ball, not just one comp- I'm saying.
I, I understand.
Where do we stop this thing as a board, do we let it get to two million?
I'm pretty sure with residential rentals. They can put their rent in escrow, correct, so they still obligated to pay the rent. So is there a way to notify them, uh, in other words, if they're in delinquent, if the business owner is in delinquent. They still have to, the businesses or the renters still have to pay rent, but it goes on escrow, is there a way to notify? The business owner, that the land or the landlord, that we will be, I don't know if seizing's the right word, but in other words. Them taking the rent and being delinquent on taxes. That that's obviously, I don't know if it's technically illegal, I would imagine it is, right, um, but is there a way to do that, talk to legal and say? Fine, you'll let the businesses still pay their rent, but it goes into a town escrow until taxes. Are 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 paid.
Sure.
In other words, that will put a little pressure on the landlord that you're not getting your rent anymore and they're not paying the taxes, so. There's gotta be, there's gotta be a way, you know, I just, like I said, I don't know, was it ten years ago, there was a half a million and, you know?
Yeah.
I don't know, but it's grown to one point two, so.
But I mean, that's, this is a snapshot in time of where it is right now, I mean, I, if we would ask ten years ago where it was, it may, very well may have been. We could look at the past audits and see what the.
Harry, it was much bigger.
Yeah.
A few years ago. Uh, she's done an outstanding job in collecting that, outstanding, it was a lot bigger.
And I wanna be careful, also, I mean, I realize that we are representing the entirety of town. And also some of these, a lot of these are our residents. And so we're essentially sitting here saying that we want to consider taking their property. And putting them out on the streets because we don't wanna work with them.
No, and I I disagree. My, my focus is on these business, which, Tamika, you said the two property owners are not residents of the town, so. That is a non-town resident that is hurting this town.
Right.
And again, I think we need to be careful about this and say, we're not going after.
Our family.
Our families, our residential neighbors, we want to work with them, we want to make sure that they're taken care of and that they're, we're, you know, that's reciprocal.
Right.
But then you've got these, like you said, they're just blatant, not doing anything, they're not residents of this town, I think that's a different case. I'm not saying we should come do this blanket across the board, go after everybody, it should be a case by case, each needs to be reviewed individually, what. Uh, you know, Becky has done or the new treasurer collectors, been, what has been done to reach out, you know. Review all the information and decide case by case what to do.
I guess what we're, is, is there a process we have for dealing with situations like this?
Yes.
Not that we wanna hurt anybody, but we've gotta. I mean, how many more years are we allowed this, and you said he's a repeat offender or she or whoever owns the property? How many years do we let this go on, mate?
So, I mean, so the the process of of, uh, unfortunately, it's, it's not an easy process to collect. Back taxes, property, personal property, uh, motor vehicle excise, unfortunately, well. I'm sure it's kind of a double edged sword, right, it's it's a, people are allowed and deserve due process. But also obviously the town has a right to collect their, um, outstanding revenues, right, so, um, for everything that's outstanding, there is a process. The town at one point adopted the M G L that allows for denial of permits. Um, the bylaw that we've adopt, or the, by, yeah, the bylaw that we've adopted, um, candidly says. That, um, the board may deny, revoke, just another word, a permit or license. Um, that whose name appears on the list of uncollected taxes, so for example, if it's. Austin's Farms, but I'm not the property owner, technically, Austin's Farms is not on the list of uncollected taxes, so there may be a question overall altogether. If the board has the authority to do this when the applicant is not the property owner, I don't know, um, but. To you, answer your question about, you know, what are the stra- strategies, um, to, you know, Karen's point, I think. Um, unfortunately, is a process, uh, D O R says, pick your top ten, because even. Top ten, um, is quite a lengthy, inexpensive process, or just remember. It, there's costs that are incurred during this process, I think there's an open article that, uh, town meeting approved at some point years ago, just to allow for Becky. And the treasurer collector's office to be able to go through this process, um, and it takes several years to get through. Um, like I said, we probably have about fifteen, um, filed in inland court right now, um. And anytime during that process as well, someone says, hey, I'll go on a payment plan, uh, or if the property owner changes. That can completely disrupt the process, so, um, you know, we do demands, we do, um, tax takings. We ultimately go to land court for for foreclosure, um, and it takes time, resources, um. And unfortunately, you know, it's not as easy as we.
I kinda like Tom's suggestion, you know, is there a way that we can. Apply their rents to an escrow fund until taxes are paid, I don't know, so that's what I'm saying, what are the options here? I mean, I'm only looking at it from a fairness standpoint. Leah does a fairness standpoint from, we don't wanna kick these people out, my fairness standpoint is, why should we make the town suffer? When somebody isn't gonna pay their taxes? There has to be some ramifications somewhere, we just can't go kick the can down the road, and that's what I'm trying to find out, how can we? You know, I voted yes on this because when I saw these people and I knew the building, you know, I said, I said, well, you know, why do I wanna punish those two for the next year? I don't, but we gotta find a a resolve to this.
But, so.
Sure, you have a lot of thoughts.
No, I don't actually, because I don't think it's right to shut down a business or something they haven't done.
No, I'm not saying that, what I'm saying is we gotta find a workaround to make this work.
Can't get blood from a stone, I'm a firm believer in that, we can do whatever we can, but you can't, you can't take my house if I don't pay my taxes. You publish it in the paper, you do whatever, but you can't take my house until they go through that same process, it's the same thing. I could stop paying my taxes today and I can be in that house for probably a good five years before you can take my house. And then by then I'm elderly and you probably gotta hold others, and then I go to land court and I say, oh, I'll give you fi- I'll give you five dollars a month.
Are we talking about your personal or business?
It doesn't matter.
It doesn't make a difference, to me, it doesn't make a difference, property taxes, I, you know, I'm renting out my garage, whatever it is, I mean, the fact is. Is you can't, you can't penalize someone who doesn't know and. you can't penalize someone who doesn't know, and I don't believe legally you can tell anybody. They, you publish it in the paper, I know that's published in the paper for delinquent taxes, so if I was owning a business, renting, I'd be double checking to make sure, I know when, when that gets published, I double check to make sure that my mortgage company pays my taxes, I make sure of that every year.
Through the chair, no, I agree, but if we could check with legal in regards to, maybe legal would tell us, you know what, start foreclosed, foreclosure process, like you said, it could take five, ten, whatever, in the meantime, we can escrow the rent. Because I know that's what they do with tenants.
But I think it's, I don't know the process for town versus mortgage companies, and also, I don't think that these two property ta- these two property owners are by far the biggest outstanding delinquents, like outstanding debt amounts, and so I'm pretty sure legal would say, you wanna go after a business for ten thousand dollars when you have others that are, should be going after the bigger ones too.
Your top ten, so to give you reference, your number ten owes forty four thousand dollars.
Okay.
Is that a resident, a residential, does it say?
I don't think it's listed by property type.
Are they on a payment plan?
Uh, it's in land court.
Okay. So, a- again, ten thousand, forty thousand in a budget of thirty five million, it's not a lot. But how do you tell that to the citizens in this town who are trying to fight for every dollar to pay their stuff, their taxes, their water bill, which has gone up by fifty percent? When you're saying, okay, let's just let these people, that, I don't care if it's five years when they pass, let them, let them just do it.
But that's not what she's doing, she's doing everything legally she can do.
Excuse me, I'm not talking about this Becky, I'm talking about how the perception is in town, if this board just lets them do that, I'm not talking, Becky is doing everything she can, but what can the board do?
But I think that that's what we can do, is let, empower the treasurer collector to do everything legally that they can do. Um, I think it's it's definitely decreased, I think, since I've been on the board, the six years that I've been on the board, and I know that one of the big ones was, I don't know what the overall net positive was, if there was much of a net positive after the, the multitudes of years of, of legal expenses and time, because there's a cost also to the, the time, staff time, and filing and everything, so it's not, to go after a ten thousand dollar is not maybe the best use of resources, and so I think that we, I, I, I don't have an answer, I don't have an answer.
That's what we're looking for.
Right, no, and I understand, I hear everyone's frustration.
That's all we want, is, if, if there is nothing we can do, then I'd like to be here, telling the townspeople, that just suffer through paying your taxes, cuz there's nothing we can do to collect, pay people that owe us money.
There, there is, it's a, there's nothing we can do immediately, there's not a, there's a legal process that it needs to follow, and it's, it's.
Like Austin just ma- I just asked if there, for our top ten, are all, all those, have they started some legal process to do whatever the liens, the foreclosures, you said, the majority of them have.
Yes.
So it sounds like that's probably what we're saying, you know, ten thousand dollars is not, even though it's multiple years, we're going after the majority of our top ten biggest offenders, biggest amounts, and once some of those clear out, then we can take another look, and as the new ones go up, start the next one, if it's, makes sense, but.
And the top ten are more than half of that one point two million.
So I think that's at least a good.
Yeah, let the legal process play out then, that's all you can do, I mean, let the courts deal with it.
I also wanna say the treasurer collector's office is not, not doing anything about, about the, the, the two for which we're speaking tonight and the other smaller ones, they're, they are actively doing everything they need to legally, so everything is documented and the timeline and everything is, is being followed, it's just to say that we're gonna,
Yeah.
We're gonna go after a business, a, a, a commercial property owner for ten thousand dollars when we have.
Yeah, I mean, I think we all agree, don't go after the business.
They, they continue to exercise their options on it.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
It's still working through the process, but I think Becky wanted it to be communicated to the board that there are instances in which, and thank, we're, we're thankful that it's not a majority, we, we approved how many licenses last meeting, plus, plus these three, it's not a majority, we have two out of the pile that we have.
Let's just hope and pray the new housing bubble doesn't burst.
If it does.
And if it does, I hope I'm not on this board.
See me, yeah, it's gonna be tough.
Yeah, yeah.
The town just needs to invest in some of its own commercial properties and be its own landlord.
Oh, boy.
Sell some of the land we have and put the money in the coffers, so we have it for a rainy day.
So, is the, to follow, finish this conversation, is the board comfortable let, allowing the treasurer collector to continue to do everything their office can do legally to ensure that the any arrears are being pursued?
Well, yeah.
Yeah.
And is there anything additional that the board would like to see?
Is there any more licenses coming before this board this year?
There should not, unless it's a new business.
Not for a renewal, only if it was a new business.
Okay. Cause that was my, if we had more licenses for renewals and they were back, that would be a different issue to look at again. I mean, I mean, you've probably, you've been on this board, how many times have you seen licenses come through that owe taxes that we just approve them anyways, the business, how many times?
Um, the, the, a couple times, I think once I was on the board that there was a business that applied for a license that did, that was in arrears and not having any communication, the board did not approve their license, I think I've said this three or four times, uh, the past couple months, the board did not approve the license, and they still continue to operate despite not having a license, and despite, I think the board, um, the board of health was even amenable to posting, um, putting signage up that they were in violation, um, and everything, and they continued to operate.
Circumstances similar to this here?
Not, it, it was the business owner was the property owner, and they were in arrears. So, I, to the best of my knowledge, this is the first time that I've heard that a business, a property owner has been delinquent, but the renter has been totally in compliance, but it's possible also that it has happened and it just hasn't made it to the board?
Yeah, I know, um, our goal and my goal is that whenever I bring something to you, I want to be as transparent as possible. So in working with the treasurer collector's office, they too wanted to be transparent that they are aware of this, and, you know, these are the circumstances, and wanted the board to be aware of it, and also the public to be aware of it, you know, that, that the board is extending, um, you know, renewal of a license, but there, there are sometimes still those issues out there that can't be overlooked either. So it's just in an effort to be transparent.
Um, moving on to item D, we have the ABCC annual town report. Um, we need to review and sign the twenty twenty three annual report for submission to the alcoholic beverages control commission, I think uh, our previous meeting, we had certified the numbers, um.
Um, yes, so you certified the, um, population number for the seasonal population form, um, this is the report that they ask us for, um, it's basically with information on, you know, how many new licenses were issued, did we have any, um, problems with any of the licenses, and how much money we generated from those licenses, so I collected all that data and com- compiled into this one report.
Thank you, um, so we need a motion to, uh, sign for submission, correct?
Yes, please.
I'd like to make a motion to sign the ABCC annual town report for submission to alcohol beverages control commission. Did I read that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We have a motion, is there a second?
A second.
A motion and a second, um, I need a conversation. Hearing none, roll call Harry.
Second and I.
Matt's and I.
Y'all have an eye?
Wait, then I, thank you, Tamika, just for public, the revenue generated, um, in twenty twenty three was twelve thousand seven hundred, um, and there were no violations of the law by any of the licenses um, in twenty twenty three. Um, bylaw committee, we ki- Austin touched on this during his update, um, I had asked that we begin, uh, the, looking at a draft of a charge for a bylaw committee and a membership, um, and in doing some digging, Austin found that the bylaw was, um, in twenty nineteen, the town adopted a bylaw for a bylaw committee, um, that pretty much outlines all of the, um, items that we need, um, so for membership, it set, the bylaw states that the member, the committee shall consist of five members appointed by the select board, the term for each member shall be three years, um, accepting terms assigned during the initial committee appointments and, um, appointments to fill vacancies. Terms shall be arranged to the tr- the terms of nearly an equal number of terms as possible expire each year. Vacancies occurring other than expiration by term shall be filled by appointment of the select board, um, and basically for the um, mem- the balance of the membership of the member that's staying with the base, that's actually different, I think, than how the other ones have been written, um, um, and that the town clerk and town administrator shall be ex officio non-voting members of the committee. Um, and then there's the purpose, as well as the duties and responsibilities um, that would essentially be the charge, I believe. So this was a bylaw that was voted on in, and approved, adopted in um, at our May twenty nineteen annual town meeting, um, and it's been through the attorney general. I think we did review this in our bylaw review, um, I'm not sure that there was any significant changes, I don't think. So my hope was, as I mentioned in Austin's update, is that, um, this could kind of be a first look, if anybody has any, um, feedback as far as kind of the, the progression forward, to bring that forward now, um, or over the next week and a half or so, and then at our next meeting, we could, um, kind of officially, officially put out a, a call for membership, um, that then could be advertised at the, um, public information meetings for the bylaw, um, reviews as well as, um, yeah. And then that there would be a little bit of overlap, this committee, I don't envision necessarily being seated by the time um, the special town meeting occurs, but shortly thereafter to provide some overlap, um, like I had mentioned also that I would envision the ad hoc bylaw committee staying seated through, um, the attorney general's adoption of the bylaws, so that they could have a little bit of overlap between those two, but it allows the bylaw, the ad hoc committee to finish their work without additional influence, and then also provide some guidance um, as the new members come on and have that permanently seated bylaw committee. So I'm not sure how the board feels, um.
Uh, I just have to, I have a question through the chair.
Yeah.
On this process of appointing members, we're going to, with it out, that we're looking for members, how are they going to reply? Are they gonna reply to the board directly, through Austin, through Tamika, and then?
Usually they ask Harry for a letter of interest to be sent to our admin email address that goes to Austin and I, and then we would compile all of these letters of interest that we receive and present them to the board.
Okay.
And generally, it's
The basic process, okay.
A letter of interest, and generally, um, for something that's a little bit more technical or something, people will highlight their expertise that would be of, of value to whatever board or commission they're being, the committee they're being appointed to.
I got that, alright.
And so I will have to remember, I think generally for the, because for the initial seating, um, I don't, it doesn't speak to it here, I think we usually do one for one year, one for two year, like.
Yeah, I know you staggered, but I don't quite remember for a brand new committee.
We can go back and look how like economic development had been staggered, because that's the most recent one.
I can check with Anita too, cuz she would probably have the most knowledge on how to stagger a vest, yeah.
Yeah, we can.
But we, I can make sure I have that information for you bef- when you guys get to that point.
Because then it would just be putting a call out and then s- ideally saying that there would be X number of posi- like positions for however many years, and then if people have a preference, they could apply for a one year or a fi- I, I, I don't know how many we would do, but
Sure.
Um, or we could just put them. Austin, is that in your experience generally how newly seated?
So, yeah, that sounds reasonable.
So, um, thank you, Austin, for digging up the bylaw, I should've known that it existed, cuz I remember like talking about it, and I didn't even think of it, so sorry, I appreciate it. Um, any other, so is that timeline okay with the board, next meeting, kind of finalizing and putting out the official call? If you have any significant, or any questions or comments now, or feel free to, you know, pass them along to, to Austin and Tamika, I just wanna reiterate that since the bylaw exists, um, we do have, we can't change the bylaw, so. Okay. Um, we have, uh, Nate's Way street acceptance, um, we need to sign, uh, vote to sign the easement deed following approval at special town meeting on November sixth, twenty twenty three, Austin, do you?
Uh, I would defer to be.
Alright, um, sorry.
So, this is kind of the last step in the street acceptance process, um, so this easement deed was drafted by town council, it was reviewed by the applicant and his attorney, both parties agreed, um, so the applicant has signed his portion, the final step is for the board to sign, and then the applicant will record it with the registry of deeds, at which time it will officially become a town road, and we will take over the maintenance crossing the road.
And again, this was approved at, uh, November town meeting.
Correct.
Um, so it's just kind of the formality that we need to do to file the paperwork, so we don't run into another.
Yeah, so we have to act within a hundred and twenty days, um, so we're still well within that, but I just wanted to make sure we kept the process going, um, and as you would expect with the winter here, that they would, as soon as we get, um, confirmation that it's been recorded with the registry of deeds, it's then, the transaction is completed and the town will take over plowing of that road for the rest of the winter.
Yes.
Will we be able to be notified so we know and?
Yes, yep, so I, um, I specifically spoke to them and said that I need to get a copy of that proof of recording, so that I can then notify the DPW that everything has been completed.
Thank you. So I take a motion to sign.
I make a motion to sign the easement deed following the approval at the special town meeting on November sixteen, two thousand twenty three in regards to Nate's Way street acceptance.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any other questions, comments, concerns? Harry, roll call.
Second and I.
Matt's and I.
I try.
Y'all have an eye?
Wait, man, I, thank you, thank you, Tamika, for keeping that on the calendar.
You're welcome.
I know. Um, we have the special winter town meeting, which is for the bylaws coming up, the meeting is scheduled for Thursday, February fifteenth, um, here in the library, in the lair room. So, uh, for tonight, we would like to open the warrant, um, I think I've, I've asked, uh, as far as for, um, town, uh, departments, that this is really held for the bylaw review, um, and I know we have a couple zoning bylaws that we need to, um, put on as kind of housekeeping that were held off for the fall, we spoke about those, I think, last meeting or two meetings ago, um, but other than that, I would really, really prefer to keep as much else, other business held until the May, and really focus on the, on the bylaws. Um, but we need to vote to open the warrant tonight.
And to clo- and the date, and time you're gonna close it.
Oh, sorry, I know you sent me the calendar, do you have it handy?
It should be in your packet.
February fifteen, yeah.
I believe it was January eleventh, I.
Yeah, yeah, sorry.
Oh, that's okay.
Yeah. So we would vote to open tonight. So we would vote to open tonight and then um close uh Thursday, February eleventh at noon. Sorry, January eleventh. Thank you.
I make a motion to um open warrant. Uh, open the warrant and votes to close war- on on January eleventh. Open it on January eighth and close on January eleventh, two thousand twenty four.
At noon.
At noontime, twelve P M.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other questions, comments, concerns, conversation? Harry none, roll call Harry.
Checkman I.
Matt's in I.
Madre I.
Y'all man I.
Oh, waitman I. Sorry, Tom.
Skipping me.
Um, and uh I think if you don't mind, Tamika, publishing the the calendar for the public information sessions.
Yes, I plan to do everything tomorrow once you guys made sure that you were comfortable with everything that fits proposed on the calendar.
Okay. Yeah. So the tentative, and I think there was an email going back and forth about working with FinCom also. Um, so the tentative calendar just for public is, um, there would be a public information session on January twenty first, which is a Sunday. Um, Monday, the twenty second, at our meeting, we would place the articles and sign the warrant. Um, Sunday, the twenty eighth, would have another public information session. Um, Thursday, the first, uh, February first, we would have to post um in order to meet MGL posting requirements. There would be another public information session on Sunday, the fourth. Um, Monday, the fifth, would be the last day to register to vote in the in that town meeting. Um and again, this is an in-person town meeting. Um, Sunday, the ele- uh, February eleventh, we have another public information session. Um, and then Thursday, the fifteenth, would be at six P M would be the start of the special town meeting here in the library. Just for public. Moving on, we have um the town planner did an assessment of the rates. Development rate limitation bylaw. Um, I don't know if the board is aware that the. Del- development rate limitation bylaw is set to expire in May of this year. Um, there's an option for it to be renewed for another. Up to five years. Um, and so uh the town planner, I think, after some requests from Austin and a couple of us, I think, has. Um, done an analysis to see what it's done for, what the this current. Development rate limitation bylaw has done for us the past five years. Um, and so that we can plan looking forward into May, um if we want to can put it for renewal or can other considerations. Um, in our packet is John's analysis. And I don't know if any, everyone had a chance to to look at it. He did a, I thought he did a really good job and I appreciate. Austin, you and John working to, and I know I imagine Dave was also, David McCray was also involved. Um, a few other department heads um in putting it together because I think this is something I've kind of been asking for and it hasn't. It's not necessarily easy to.
Yeah, so the the actually, the the bylaw, which is also included in this, um, section. Uh ninety eight um requires a town administrator or the designated to review the bylaw for respect of this prior to the request of town meeting. Uh to extend it. Um, so given that this is kind of the time where we start thinking about annual town meeting. Um, any potential bylaw changes, um, I have asked um John Charbonneau, our town planner, to review this, working with the building department. Um, he has provided, I think, a thoughtful memorandum that kind of gets the history of it, um, reasons for. Um, why they believe, why he believes it's not effective, some some data to in- inform that as well and comes to a conclusion and. Um, again, why why uh it's staff's opinion that this bylaw was not effective in its original intent. Um, you know, I don't think that there's any additional recommendations other than. Um, I think growth management is is. Kind of one of those phrases that's passed around, but um there's certainly other tactics that can be uh deploy at the local level, like looking at zoning. Um, if you're looking to incentivize businesses and other um possible incentives. Um, this is one thing candidly also that um I think came with a a a warning from the attorney general's office that they would likely not. Um, approve anything further than one more additional extension. Um, we talk about a housing shortage nationwide, especially in Massachusetts. Massachusetts uh were a housing choice community um as well. Um, so a bylaw like this um is awfully restrictive. And again, given the history of this bylaw, uh with some of the folks in town, uh just was not um effective in its original intent. And it would be staff's recommendation to take no a- no action on this article at a future town meeting. Uh until at this sunset, at the conclusion of town meeting. But again, no action is requested tonight, just an informational communication for you.
Through the chair?
Yeah.
One of the things the bylaw was tried to do was to limit, if I understand it correctly. Was to limit subdivision building to thirty-two a year.
Very sexy.
Because A and R is outside of it, uh senior housing is outside of it. Uh, all this stuff is outside of it. So what it tried to do is limit that. So as I'm looking at this. The non-exempt properties are the ones that fall within the subdivision bylaw. Correct? Because the exempts are all the other ones that fall outside of it. Am I correct on that?
Um, I'd have to dive into and see what exactly the the particular parcels that, you know, for example, in in twenty twenty three of the twenty-one that were not exempt. I don't know how many of those were not within a subdivision, if they were just kind of a straight-up building permit. Um, I know that most of the exempt permits were um in reference to some of the active subdivisions and in the memo provided by. The town planner, it ac- it it actually explicitly calls out some of those subdivisions that were specifically exempt from this bylaw. Um, but, you know, within the non-exempt, there may be some within other subdivisions that were after the fact. Um, that may have been affected by this bylaw.
I guess when I'm looking at this and I'm thinking, we tried to limit it to thirty-two, but when you have so much exempt property. How do you limit it to thirty-two? I don't, I'm glad that it was the recommendation not to go forward with it because it was poorly written in the first place. In terms of how it's to be used. I think there are better ways if we want to manage growth. And I think some of the numbers in there were not appropriate. They did, they weren't what they should be, which is proving us now after five years what the numbers look like. So in. So if we're looking at forty-nine, fifty-six, fifty-eight and fifty-six. Then obviously the bylaw didn't work because there was too many exemptions. If you look at the stuff that was non-exempt. Then you had twenty-one, thirty, thirty, thirty and eight. Well, the bylaw worked then. So it was poorly written, so we shouldn't continue to go that going forward. We should look at new avenues. So I. Appreciate that you're digging into this because. Uh, I I'd like to see some type of something happen in town where we can control, but not the way it was written.
If I may.
Yeah.
Do you happen to know where you know the the legal challenge of the bylaw? What the. What were they challenging that allowed them to be exempt, the subdivisions?
Uh, I don't know specifically, I I but I think in.
I think it was.
Probably summary was just that that um the existing subdivisions that were approved prior to this bylaw.
Prior to the bylaw.
Um, they made the argument that they were exempt.
It was clearly grandfathered. Okay.
We have a legal expert here who may be able.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm an expert, however. Um, when a subdivision is approved. The zoning for that subdivision is frozen. There is no zoning bylaw change allowed to apply to that subdivision. Or for that matter, for any approval, for any for any building permit, for any anything. It all, what matters is when it was approved. And anything that happens after that does not apply to that, other because it's grandfathered. And so the the current, that at the at the time approved subdivisions. That were being actively worked on were exempt from the from the bylaw. Any future one would not be, but.
Okay.
So, if I may, the those, let's just take twenty twenty-three. A lo- the eleven exempt properties, some of those could have been under that old. Challenge, it could have been under there that said, yes, you're still allowed to build. And so if we had to, say they were all that way, there was no A and R or anything. So if we add eleven to the twenty-one, we come to thirty-two, which is still within the limit under this, but the other ones are not. So a lot of building went on under the old properties, it looks like, under that challenge.
Correct. And there are enough exemptions so that I would not want to ju- to guess. In fact, I can say with certainty that not every building permit that was exempt is. An approved sub- was a previously approved subdivision. All the senior housing that we've had in several years, for example.
Right. Right, right, okay. Just to give some clarity.
And I I wanna add add that the master plan does speak to some other different. Ways to look at zoning to, I think, to Austin and to John's point, um to try to, so if, when if the master plan is. Um, adopted, I think that there's some additional town-driven data that can. Maybe creatively look at o- other options to to. I don't want to say restrict.
Regulate.
Right, I don't, because it's not necessarily restriction, but to en- ensure that we have a manageable rate of growth.
Mm-hmm.
Um, for all of town services.
Yeah, I don't, I don't.
Yeah, or, I mean, or if if it's not residential, it's it's incentivizing. Um, commercial and or and or business development. Um, I know I had a recent conversation with our town planner. Um, he's very much looking forward to having a conversation with the planning board to talk about. Rezoning certain parcels for business or industrial parks.
Mm-hmm.
Looking at town-owned property and seeing if there's opportunities for. Um, as this board has kind of already talked about and uh several months ago, incentivizing business development to come to come to, or businesses to come to town for economic development purposes, so. Um, that I think is is probably the long-term best strategy. Um, certainly, I, you know, I don't want to dismiss, obviously, we do have a strain on our infrastructure. We, you know, talk about a secondary water source. Um, you know, but growth is gonna come either way, so even if we bring business development, it's still going to strain our infrastructure. So we we need to address our infrastructure, um because growth is inevitable. But I think we can do it tastefully and respectfully, still thinking about the characters as well of the community, so.
I know this question is a little off topic, but for any of the new development, residential development towns, are they allowed to hook up to the town? Water sewer or are they, are we requiring septic and?
Um, I think the pre-approved ones, Peter, you might not, the pre-approved, the ones that have been approved for a while. Have, I think, access to water and sewer infrastructure. Um, and.
There is a separate permit for each of those to connect to water and connect to sewer, so any development that would come along. Would need, wherever they are in the process, at some point, they have to get the permits before they start. Loading water and sewer lines in their road, so it's early early in the process that they would hope for those.
So, if I may, so any new s- any new subdivision that comes along. If it's after this bylaw goes away. It's a whole different set of rules then.
It's back to the rules before. The bylaw, before the growth limitation article is passed.
Okay. Alright, just so I understand, cause I don't think except for the three subdivisions, there's in the last couple of years, there's been new subdivisions come up. Has there?
No, there have not been.
Okay, that's, that was my question.
My knowledge, anyway.
I don't think Hilltop. Was, I don't think Hilltop was already on the books, was it?
I don't think, I think it was.
Well, that's true. Hilltop is new and it's eleven.
But there's sort of off, where's Hill?
I mean, what I'm seeing now is a lot of A and R. Properties like the Lucier, you know, they're building individual properties off a road, so it doesn't fall under that pure subdivision rules.
But Tamika's right, there have been a couple of sm- what I will call smaller subdivisions that have been approved.
Okay.
Okay. Um, so Austin, please extend I thank, my thanks, our thanks to.
Yeah.
Staff for putting a a thoughtful and comprehensive piece together because I know Dave's spoken to it a couple times, but it's nice to kind of see it cumulatively. Um, and my hope was that we were, we would get that information kind of yearly, just to see benchmark where we were and what was going on. And it's not easy to do, so I appreciate it. Um, moving on, we have a culvert replacement on Miles Road. Um, Austin spoke to this in his town administrator update. Asking to um s- provide Austin and I signing, and I both?
Either one.
Okay, either or, signing authority for the license agreement for the cul- culvert replacement on Miles Road between the town and D C R. Wild, fish and wildlife, right?
D C R, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Make a motion to approve uh a signing authority for town administrator and select board chair. Um, for the licensing agreement for the culvert replacement on Miles Road.
Do you want to pick one or the other? It can be, they, with the setup, they can be either Austin or Leah, so do you want to pick one?
Oh, I thought it was both, I'm sorry.
I'm comfortable, I mean, I personally am comfortable.
You will.
It's right here, so wherever you want to sign.
I have a date.
Yeah, I'm.
It's in your name, you want it already.
Okay.
You want to do Leah's.
Okay, it's, that's fine.
Through the chair?
Yeah.
And just, just, um, this license is uh will expire at the end of the month. Again, as I mentioned in my update, we believe we'll. Complete this work sometime this week, um as long as materials and and folks are available. Um, while he's here, um, I believe he conducted a visit with folks on site and um. Allowed for emergency um construction, whatever the, whatever it's called, certification.
Certification.
Um, to allow for this project to also move forward at the local level. So thank you, pound call.
Thank you. So there's a motion um to authorize the chair to sign. Is there a second?
Yeah, one second.
Motion and a second. Any questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none, roll call Harry.
Checkman I.
Matt's in I.
Madre I.
Y'all man I.
Waitman I. Um, I just want to put out our future meetings, uh regular scheduled meetings are January twenty-second, February fifth. Um, then we have the winter special town meeting for bylaws on February fifteenth. Um, and then our next reg- regular scheduled meeting would be Tuesday, February twentieth, that's the day after President's Day. Um, just be mindful, I think that that's school vacation week, so um if. There's gonna be any quorum issues or if we need to go Zoom or something, but I. Just wanted to put it out there. Um, w- we have two more executive sessions. Um, so I would entertain a motion to enter into executive session. Um, for reason number three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. An open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigated position of the public body, and the chose, chair so declares. Um.
On February twentieth.
And it's for um. An update on the Department of Conservation and Recreation Sewer Treatment Fee, Transport Fee Matter. And a second reason for number three, collective bargaining with a um Ask Me, Ask Me. Local ninety-three, the Administrative Professionals Union, to adjourn directly from executive session, not to return to open.
Okay.
So moved.
Yeah, that's gonna be my favorite saying.
So we have a motion. Is there a second? I'll show you. I'll let you figure that one out. Um, roll call, Harry.
Checkman I.
Matt's in I.
Madre I.
Y'all man I.
Waitman I. We are heading into executive session. Thank you all.